Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Maloney and Moore's Parade on Montecarlo. The acronym is AMPAC, under Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 120, Class 120. What did we learn in Class 119? Well, once again, we're learning that the Moors have wasted a lot of time, right? The Moors have delayed their own justice, right? In order to get justice, right? In order to get justice as a people, you must understand justice is a product of a job well done. What do I mean? If you want justice as a people, it starts with three branches of government first. See, justice is what? Judicial system. But before there's a judicial system, there must be what? A legislative branch and an executive branch to enact laws. The justice comes from the fact that the judge then sets forth a ruling based upon your laws. If someone has infringed against your rights, what does your rights mean? It means your law, someone's broke your laws, right? So therefore, the Moors have been looking for justice, love, truth, peace, freedom, and justice. Well, you can never achieve it if you don't have your own three branches of government. So therefore, we'll never achieve justice until we start to first recognize that we've delayed our own justice and accept that truth, that fact. Because we didn't even know our own nationality. See, first we gotta look in the mirror and recognize that justice starts with self. But the whole time, we've been trying to blame somebody else for our problem. We've been having pity parties blaming the white man. And the whole time, you didn't realize this person you call a white man is just actually American. And him as American, he been signing treaties. He been relinquishing rights back to you. And you didn't know it because you didn't know who you were. You thought you was a black man fighting a white man, but he ain't the white man. He's American and he been signing treaties. That so-called white man is American over there in the United Nations Charter, voting on initiatives regarding indigenous people. The reality is this, it is us who have held us back. Yeah, the colonists is 50% the problem, but what about us? Can we honestly look in the mirror and say that we did everything the same way, identical way, mirror image that the Africans did to decolonize? Did we do it? No. Did we do what Cuba did? No. Did we do what Mexico did? No. Did we ever try to truly figure out what good brother Il Malik Chabass was actually trying to achieve? Did we do it? No. The whole time, we keep blaming this white man. And the reality is, is our problem as a community. And let me just say this for the record. We need to really examine who our leaders have been. You know, there's an old saying that says, "If you scared, go to church." Well, guess what happened? Guess who's been all our leaders for decades? People who run churches. Whether they run some church as the pastor, right, reverend, those have been the leaders. Whether they got a mosque, those been the leaders. Whether they got a temple, those have been the leaders. So let me get this right. If you scared, go to church. So the scared people went to church and they became leaders in the church and then all of a sudden they became the leader of the community? Because that's what's happening? We've allowed paper tiger leaders to be the leaders. Or they act like they all strong and they going hard to paint. And the whole time, United States knows exactly who's real and who's not. Soon as you fighting through a 501(c)(3) church status, they already know they got you. Let me give you an example. As soon as brothers stop wearing the bow tie and they jump out there and they no longer a part of a mosque, guess what happens? They start really having the freedom to go out there and really fight for the people. Soon as they take the bow tie off, now they can go really fight for the people. As soon as you pick up the real torch of politics, that's when you're really looking out for the people. You no longer worry about religion. You ain't worried about your religious organizations. You ain't worried about reading no more books. You're talking about law, not books, but law. So reason why we have been in this buffering status is because the church leaders have been our leaders in the community. And the old saying is, "If you scared, go to church." And those people that went to church all of a sudden became somebody at the church and they became the community leader because everybody in church is scared. They in the church scared, all of them. So if you got a cowardly lion up front leading a bunch of other cowardly lions, then guess what you'll get out of that? Cowardly lion results, paper ties. That's been our problem the whole time. We've been hiding behind religious books. That's no disrespect to a religious organization. I'm talking leaders, listen to what I'm saying. You got people of religious organizations claiming that are leaders in our community. If you saying you're leading our community, you're leading us where? You leading us in a circle or you leading us forward? Because there is a difference when you're talking about motion. You got motion or you got forward motion, which one is it? That's the question we gotta start asking ourselves. And that's why I say we gotta blame ourselves because we allowed these cowardly lions to be out front. Let's get into the class. As you know, I always open up the Constitution because the Constitution shows that you're serious. Your Declaration of Independence and your Constitution is what lets everybody know you're serious. You ain't talking about freedom. You're forcing freedom through a pen. That's when the colonists know you're serious. Today's feature of Constitution is the Moors on what's coming on this Palau Island. Palau's Constitution of 1981 with amendments through 1992. So the people on Palau Island, right, they drafted their Constitution in 1979, right? It came in the full force in 1981, but they have a Constitution, right? Here's what happened. Right here, if you look it up, it says, "Constitution of Palau," the Constitution of Palau, Constitution of the Republic of Palau, right, there's their language. It says, "Was adopted by the Palau Constitutional Convention from January 28th to April 2nd, 1979." Then it was ratified at Third Constitution Referendum on July 9th, 1880.
1880.
1880, thank you. Then it says, "And entered into force January 1st, 1981." Right, so they had a constitutional convention, right? They were drafting a constitution, right? They ratified it, keyword ratified it, July 9th, 1880. They moving forward, they're decolonizing. Then their Constitution entered into force January 1st, 1981, right? Now, before we take a look at their Constitution, okay, keep in mind they're on an island outside of the Philippines, okay? Here they go. Who they look like? They're Moors. They're on an island putting in the hard work in the 70s and 80s. The 70s and 80s, they over there putting in the real work. Huh? Look at her, look at her nose, look at her lips, cheekbones. You gotta understand what's happening, these are Moors. In the 70s and 80s, decolonizing checking boxes. They ain't over there talking about keep hope alive. They ain't over there blaming the white man. And they sure as heck ain't over there talking about enforce the Constitution of United States of America. They knew they were colonized. Why don't they turn around and try to use a colonist's constitution to get their remedy? They been studying international law since the 70s. But yet, we over here talking about enforce the Constitution of a colonist's constitution for people on an island. Having enforcing international law with their own constitution. Just a moment, look at this. You see him? There he is. See that? On an island, people on islands. And you know why they can sing and dance? Because they earned the right to sing and dance and celebrate. They decolonized. While we over here happy with what's called BET. This is shameful, but we gotta understand who has been our leaders. It's been religious organizations. Shame on us. Go back to the Constitution, it's the feature, okay? So now we got their Constitution up, okay? Remember now, they started this journey 1979 when they started drafting, right? Okay, now, now we come down to the preamble, let's read their preamble. This is what Moors should have been studying for decades. What are other Moors doing on planet Earth? We keep talking about, "Oh, we gotta study world history, law and history goes together." But I can't tell we've been studying law and history. We've been studying the white man's Constitution, United States of America, and we need to be honest. We ain't studied nothing outside of that. We haven't studied decolonization. We really haven't. Because decolonization means what? It's constitutionalism, nationalism, it's political boxes you gotta check. Noah's preamble.
Preamble. "In exercising our inherent sovereignty, we, the people of Palau, proclaim and reaffirm our memorial right to be supreme in these islands of Palau, our homeland. We renew our dedication to preserve and enhance our traditional heritage, our national identity, and our respect for peace, freedom, and justice for all mankind. In establishing this constitution of the sovereign republic of Palau, we venture into the future with full reliance on our own efforts and the divine guidance of Almighty God."
All right, so these people on the island have their own Constitution since the 70s. My Moors over here talking about, "Did Noah Drouali say that?" No, you know what Noah did? Noah wrote a Constitution, didn't he? Now, did he fall short because it turned into a church bylaw? Yeah, but that's all right. He tried in the early 1900s. He tried. But the world moved on past these Moors. So I wanna say congratulations to the good people of Palau. You've earned the right to have your sovereignty. Now, look, territory, see? Moors be talking about they wanna claim territory. Okay, you gotta have a constitution or to claim a latitude longitude. That's territory, okay? That's a part of their Constitution, defining territory, okay? Let's go, Ctrl+F, let's now put in the word, see here, executive. Okay, what do we have here? They have an executive branch, right? They got three branches of government, executive branch, okay? What else do we have? All right, do they have a legislative branch? Let's see. Okay, just a moment. All right, they have also what? A legislative branch, see that? Legislative power, that's their second branch of government. Okay, do they have a judicial branch? Let's take it out. Okay, scroll on down, judiciary, three branches of government, right? They tell you right here, they got a Supreme Court. They got their own courts. These are Moors on the islands since the 70s. This is shameful. That's them. Noah.
Palau is a sovereign nation and conducts its own foreign relations. From its independence until July 2019, Palau had established diplomatic relations with 101 countries. Palau was admitted to the United Nations on December 15th, 1994 and has since joined several other international organizations.
So they became a member state in 1994. They were doing this in the 90s. We over here marching and praying, keeping hope alive, right? Talking about Black Power. You got people on islands with a pin in their hand getting their declarations together. This is their flag. That's their flag. And now their flag is hanging at the United Nations along with other flags. United Nations Headquarters in Manhattan, New York. Yet the Moors over here have never taken the time to go even knock on the door. Hey, can we talk about decolonization? Since the other Moors been doing it for the past 50, 60, 70 years, Moors don't do it? But these people have a flag at the United Nations. Where's our flag? Black people don't have no flag at the United Nations. We're not representing people if you was black. Martian Americans don't have no flag at the United Nations, talking about their government. You ain't got no flag? We gotta understand what's happening right now. What steps have we taken that good brother Il Malik Chabass was trying to get us a flag at the United Nations? What did we do? We let them just transition in vain. We let good brother Noah Drouali transition in vain. We let good brother Martin Luther King transition in vain. This is what we've done as a people. You know why? Because our leaders are hiding at the church because they scared. Then we turn around and make them the representative of our communities. But we don't have no flag, we talking all that noise, but we're working towards it now. We moving forward, we're no longer buffering. Why? Because the religious organizations are not leading this political point, that's why. We the people, not no church organization, we the people are leading this forward now. The common authority of states will talk about that. What were we doing in the 70s while Palau was writing their constitution? Know what we doing? We was over here moonwalking. Good brother Michael Jackson was putting that work in, right? We love our BET. But we should have been doing what? Writing the Constitution. So 1979, 1978, 1978, the Weas came out. 1979, Michael Jackson had all kind of albums came out. This is the 70s. While the Africans was decolonizing, the islands were decolonizing, but we was over here trying to figure out how to moonwalk. Shout out to Michael Jackson. What is this?
It's Million Man March.
Million Man March, 1996. What came out of this? Let me just say this for the record. Louis Farrakhan was the first one to really pack them all before Barack H. Obama ever did. So I give credit to good brother Louis Farrakhan. Gotta give credit where credit due. But what does this really mean to me looking back on it now? You see all our people? We were ready for unity. We were ready for unity, but we needed what? We didn't understand the instructions of decolonization. We were ready, this proves it, this was 96. All we had to understand was the instructions of what Africa was doing. Keep in mind, there's a big giant obelisk, obelisk right here. That's your obelisk, the Moors put that in place. It's been here for 10 days before the colonists could even spell the word colonist. That was already here. And all our people standing in front of it don't have a clue that they're indigenous to the land. They're standing out here saying, "Okay, what do we do next?" Farrakhan, because that's why they're there to figure out what's the marching instructions. So what was the instruction? Can anybody tell me what we supposed to do next? I don't know this term. What came out of it? I can tell you what came out of it? Nothing. So that must have been the instructions, nothing. But wait, okay. This good brother Farrakhan, he's with Gaddafi. Gaddafi got on a fad. Why is this image important? Now you have to know the history of Gaddafi, right? So Martin Gaddafi, okay, but wait, let's look at a quick snapshot. Can you read that for me, Brother Dre?
Muhammed Abu Minyar Al-Gaddafi was a Libyan revolutionary politician and political theorist who ruled Libya from 1969 until his assassination in 2011 by rebel forces. He was a controversial figure who had a complex relationship with the African continent. In the early years of his rule, he was a proponent of Pan-Arabism and sought to unite the Arab world under his leadership. However, from 1999 onwards, he shunned Pan-Arabism and instead encouraged Pan-Africanism and repulsion with Western nations. He was even elected as a chairperson of the African Union in 2009.
So good brother Gaddafi, he was the head of state, Libya, that's number one, head of state. Number two, he was trying to put together the United States of Africa. In addition to that, he tried to put together the Arab states as well, but the Arabs didn't get it together. He wanted to bring together what's called the Pan-Arab Movement or the Arab States. Well, that fell apart. So then he embraced the Pan-African Movement, so he tried to bring the United States of Africa together. So if the good brother tried to put together the United States of Africa, that means he understood statehood on the highest level. He understood how to get rid of what? Neo-colonialism. Keep in mind, he had his own state, then he tried to establish the United States of Africa, that's powerful. He was a person who understood the mission and vision. Now, I don't agree with all his tactics, right? He made a lot of bad decisions, a lot. But you cannot discredit the mission and vision of bringing the African states together to deal with neo-colonialists, right? What's my point? Good brother Louis Farrakhan would tell you that Gaddafi was his brother. Okay. Are we to assume that Gaddafi never mentioned to any of the Negro, Black, and colored spiritual leaders this thing called statehood? Are you saying there was no Declaration of Independence conversations? There were no conversations about drafting a constitution, ratifying the constitution, and entering it into full force in effect? When Gaddafi's whole mission was to bring states together? The people were ready. That's 1996, the people was ready. They just need to know what we need to do. 1996. Keep in mind, in Europe, Ukraine had signed, put their constitution together, right? The Cold War happened, so now the USSR has broken up into other many states in Europe. So you got brand new European states rising up saying, "We wanna be a state." They're declaring their independence in Europe, such as Ukraine. All this happened in the 90s. Statehood is nothing new. It's just new to Moors in the West. The people was ready even in the 90s. This is Dred Scott. From 1856, he was trying to fight the good fighter. He fought him in the state courts. He petitioned the federal courts and finally got his case to the Supreme Court. He was fighting the good fight. He could have been assassinated at any moment because they didn't like the fact he was trying to take this thing all the way to the top to help himself as a slave to be free because they know it would have became what? Case law. If Dred Scott would have won, all the slaves would have been used what? That Rastunacala, isn't that correct? But he still fought the good fight. He knew what he was doing for himself, right? He was looking at the reciprocity of what he was doing for everybody else as well. He fought the good fight and he deserves better. He was a Moor. They just didn't wanna tell him he was a Moor, i.e. Moroccan. He had been basically naturalized, but not just yet because this happened in 1856. So the United States of America hadn't naturalized the Moors just yet. But he fought the good fight. He took it all the way. We got our good brother Noah Drouali, he fought the good fight. He gave it everything, he didn't leave nothing on the field. Rocking his fads all the time, gotta fight the good fight. Our good brother Martin Luther King, he fought the good fight. But do you realize once he really started getting away from the Baptist church, he really just got into a full-blown politics? As soon as he said out loud, "The Negro have been languished in his own homeland." See, United States knew right then and there he about to tell the black people quote unquote that they actually Moors. They knew it. Keep in mind now, he had already passed civil rights. So he didn't pass civil rights, he up there with Lyndon Johnson passing the bill. So the so-called fight is over. You would think that at least the bill was passed because that's what they was fighting for, right? Rights. It got passed. He gets assassinated after that. Why? Because he wanna talk about that church stuff no more. He was really getting into full-blown politics to help the Moors. You gotta understand what's happening. Your brother Il Malik Chabass, this image is not Malcolm X. Malcolm X had a bow tie, no beard. This is Il Malik Chabass, once he started hanging out with the African heads of state. Now he rocking a black fad for the most part because back then that's how they was rocking it. He got the goatee, he ain't got no bow tie. Now all of a sudden, now he's full-blown what? Politician, going to United Nations. Listen. Soon as he got out of the organization, he got taken out. Good brother Khalid Muhammad, he fought the good fight. Soon as he wasn't wearing the bow tie no more, now he's a full-blown politician. He ain't wanting to church no more. He wasn't being held back no more. He was free to now be a full-blown politician to help the people. What happened? Okay, we all know what happened. Listen. Show you how Khalid talk. Once he was out of the church, this how he was talking, listen.
Who are the Moors? This is one of the most difficult of historical questions and in fact, this is the most neglected chapter in Black history.
Muslim.
You Muslim Khalid?
Yes, I am. But I'm a Moor. Slar. I'm a Moor.
You got a sister enough to know I'm a Moor. And they gonna never argue with you that I'm not a Moor. And wouldn't come in your house or come among you and say I'm a Moor if I didn't feel that my heart and my mind and my soul that I am.
I will tell you, goddammit, I don't know what the hell you're talking about. No Moor. So if I say it, I mean it. If I mean it generally, I say it. You Muslim? Yes. But I know my roots. And I ain't Kunta Kingdom.
Prophet Noble Drew Ali. Huh? Prophet Noble Drew Ali taught us about the Kanyi. And he taught us that we are the Asiatic people. Master Farad Muhammad coming behind that strongly turned it to the Most Honorable Elijah Muhammad that we are the Asiatics. We are people now that want to fight us, attack us. So you mean you've become so degenerate and so sick until you will call yourself an Asiatic? Instead of an African? Well, I use African just for communication. But our lessons ask the question, why? Why what? One of my, one of my five percenters that's in the Panther Party, why what? Why does the devil call us Africans? And it goes on to say. Let's look at it, brothers and sisters. Brother Henry touched on it last month. Do you know that one time the whole earth was called Asia? North Asia, South Asia, East Asia, West Asia. When we say Asiatic, we're not talking about a little continent. We're not stuck on some little so-called Arabs riding some camels. And so we so stuck on them, we just got stuck on stupid. And we started saying Asia. We're not talking about a continent. We're talking about when the landmass of what is called Planet Earth was different. Huh? Even Saudi Arabia. We can, let's talk about another point here before we finish Asiatic. Saudi Arabia, Israel, Mecca, Medina, all of that is in what is called Africa today. Egypt. Look at Egypt on the map and the white man want to tell you it's not in Africa. It's in the Middle East. There is no Middle East. No Middle East. Absolutely not. The Middle East is nothing but a man-made ditch separated from the mainland of Africa by what is called the Suez Canal. All of it is northeast what is called Africa today. All of it. Look at it for what it's worth, brothers and sisters. But at one time, the whole planet, look at South America and what is called Africa today. Cut them out and you can fit them together like a puzzle piece. The planet Earth was different as it is called today. It had a different landmass. We're called Asiatics again, not because of a continent, because at one time the whole planet was called Asia. You just want to claim a spot? For the whole thing. Africa is not our home. Let me let that hang in the atmosphere for a while. I said at this gathering of the masters, Africa is not your home. It's not our home. Africa, as it is called today, is our throne. And from that throne, we ruled our home, which is a hundred and ninety-six million, nine hundred and forty thousand square miles of the planet Earth. And seventy-six quintillion miles throughout the distance of the diameter and the sphere, the sphere of light of the diameter of the unit.
So what is my point? The question is, what have we done as a people to move forward? We've had a lot of leaders that tell us what we should do. We had a lot of leaders just like to point the finger at the white man. But the question is, what is the, what is the Moroccan doing to move the ball forward? We've just been buffering and buffering and buffering and having pity parties. We ain't going nowhere fast. If this was a marathon, the Moors would be at the back of the race. Where everybody else is up front decolonizing, declaring their independence, having constitutions, getting into relations with other states. We're at, we're at the back of the marathon. And the worst part is the United Nations headquarters is, is basically across the street. You can walk across the street and, and knock on the door. We got to do these good brothers justice. Another way to do these good brothers justice that came before us is to enact the three pressures of government. That way we can do what? We can enforce justice because we have laws of our own communities, of our own states. Therefore, if someone does something infringing against our rights, i.e. our laws, we can hold them accountable in our courts. The people of Palau got their own three pressures of government. They got a Supreme Court. You can understand what I'm saying? So the Moroccans are moving forward. This is seven states. We're moving forward. We're not buffering no more. You know why? Because we're outside of the religious organization. That's why. Ain't no more paper tigers. Ain't no more cowardly lions looking like a lion, which is really a cowardly lion. And everybody in the United States knows the difference between cowardly lions and people who are, who are lions with courage. And you know what? You see right here? That's seven lions. Courageous lions right there, seven of them right there. And the list is growing. Trust me, we're working on it. It's growing. We're not buffering. We're moving forward. We got forward motion and not just motion. So we're going to hold our good brothers in high esteem that kept up the good fight before we got here. They all realized we was Moors. And the Moorish science temple always know we were Moors. But unfortunately, like they say, when you scared, go to church. And we let scared people be our leaders. We got to learn from this and not make this mistake again. Listen. So in class one nineteen, we were going over this United Nations General Assembly Resolution fifteen forty-one, right? About decolonization and trying to put you in kind of a classification of what's going to be your status during decolonization. Right? So we, we got down to, uh, principle number six, right? And when we start to understand on the principle number six is that these are basic, just basic decisions that the people are trying to decolonize can choose from. People are trying to decolonize can do what? They can, A, they have a merge as a sovereign independent state. That's a choice. Under what's called self-determination. Or B, they can have free association with an independent state. That's a choice of self-determination. Or C, they can accept integration with an independent state, right? So we learned about this as independence, right? So the African states are independent. And, and section B is free association with that. That, that's like the islands have accepted a free association because they still kind of connected with the former colonial power. They've signed some type of contract, right? Some type of agreement. But that agreement kind of keeps a foothold on that island. You see? So they're not necessarily, uh, in full status of independence. Okay? And then C, that is basically an Indian reservation, right? And we learned in class one nineteen that the Moors actually have treaties that already have substantive language that said we have, we're entitled, we have an absolute right to have sovereignty and independence. And then we're supposed to be what? The Moorish authority, the sovereign authority throughout the empire of Morocco. And we found out the empire now just encompasses what? It's just an extensive, right? Extensive land, extensive land of groups of states and countries under one single authority. And that was the Sultan of Morocco overseeing a vast empire, right? Keep in mind that the Sultan just represents an office. It's not a person. It's an office, right? No different than prime minister, et cetera. It's an office, right? And that office was overseeing a, a central government of the empire. And at the time, the central government was located over in Africa, right? So the central government was, uh, uh, the city of Fes, Mauritania, uh, Tangier, uh, Madrid, et cetera. The, the location kept moving, but it's still in the empire Morocco. All right? Now, keep in mind that when we was going over the resolution, um, fifteen forty-one, let's go back to it. We was going over a resolution fifteen forty-one, it was about what? It was about Article seventy-three E, section E of the Charter. All right? So now let's go down to the Charter and read Article seventy-three. And then at the same time examine what were they talking about in section E? All right? Okay. All right? So. No. That.
Uh, Chapter eleven, Declaration Regarding Non-Self-Governing Territories, Article seventy-three. Members of the United Nations which have or assume responsibilities for the administration of territory whose people have not yet attained a full measure of self-government recognize the principle that the interests of the inhabitants of these territories are paramount and accept as a sacred trust the obligation to promote to the utmost within the system of international peace and security established by the present Charter, the well-being of the inhabitants of these territories and to this end.
All right, Paul. So what is this all about? It's about the sacred trust. Sacred trust. Well, why they call it sacred trust? It's because the Europeans know that all the lands they colonized were basically put on a trusteeship system. But why were they technically calling it trust? It's because the Sultan allowed them basically to naturalize the lands as long as the Europeans were paying taxes. Right? So the Europeans know that even in Europe, they're just administrators even in Europe. They know they're not the indigenous people of the land. Right? You ever heard Europeans say, yeah, we're indigenous? They, they don't talk like that. Think about it. You ain't ever heard Europeans say, yeah, we built the pyramids? They don't talk like that. So they know they're not indigenous. So therefore, if they know they're not indigenous, they know what? That they're basically just administrators over a land that actually belongs to indigenous people. Therefore, all of them are in a status of trust. Sacred trust. Why they call it sacred? It's because of the treaties. The treaties are set forth language that told them they, that the Sultan allowed them to put the Moors in a trusteeship status to protect the Moors. To put the Moors in a position where the Moors can now come on at least a government because the Moors were just roaming everywhere. Moors were everywhere. So since the Europeans took over our governments, the Sultan said, look, I have my central government, but the Moors now in these European territories, since Europeans are running governments, you have to now put these Moors in a naturalized status, right? And look out for their well-being. And technically, it wasn't supposed to even be taxing Moors. You see? Because it's the Moorish land, right? So now the Europeans are basically in a trusted, trust, sacred trust status as trustees and administrator. You see this word right there? Administrator. Okay? From the top, it says, members of the United Nations which have or assume responsibility for the administration, so the administrators of territories. You see that? The administering, what does administration mean? Government. Right? They're governing. Whose people have not yet attained a full measure of self-government. So therefore, the indigenous people are trying to rise back up and get into government, you see? Because the Europeans ran them out of government. Everybody know the Moors was running Europe for, for decades, but now the Europeans took over. Okay, now they took over the governments. Now they're responsible for the Moors. It's like if you adopt a child, right? You're responsible for that child now, right? So therefore, under Article seventy-three, which is basically a rights indigenous people, it gets into, gets into obligations that the Europeans have when they're dealing with Moors. Okay? Section A. No.
A. To ensure with due respect for the culture of the people's concern, their political, economic, social, and educational advancement, their just treatment, and their protection against abuses.
All right. So section A. So the Europeans are responsible, i.e. the administrators and the trustees overseeing Moorish lands, are responsible to ensure with due respect for the culture of the people's concern, their political, economic, social, and educational advancement, their just treatment, and their protection against abuses. So Europeans weren't supposed to be abusing us. They're supposed to assist us to get back into our political status again. You understand, they wrote this in nineteen forty-five. Right? They had, they had fully colonized the Moors. But they understood an obligation because of the treaties. What treaty? Where the Act of Adversaries in nineteen oh six said it was an obligation for the Moors to get back into government. That was an obligation. Right? So this is nineteen forty-five. So therefore, the Europeans knew it was an obligation for these Moors to be running the empire Morocco. But they had to help them get back into government because that's what the Act of Adversaries is all about, is train the Moors to get back into their political status. That way they could be the sovereign authority. Okay? Section B.
B, to develop self-government, to take due account of the political aspirations of the peoples and to assist them in the progressive development of their free political institutions according to their particular circumstances of each territory and its peoples and their varying stages of advancement.
Okay. You, you don't think Martin Luther King knew about this? Right? I'm sure he read this. Martin Luther King was hanging out with the President of the United States. You think he didn't know about the Charter? You gotta remember how smart Martin Luther King was. I think he graduated from college when he was like eighteen or nineteen years old. He was very smart, right? Well-studied. So section B. So the Europeans supposed to help us to do what? Section B, to develop self-government. They supposed to help us to develop self-government. To take due account of the political aspirations. You see that? Of the peoples. And to assist them. And to assist them. And to assist them in the progressive development of their free political institutions. Let me pause right there. You see the word free? Now you see where the Resolution fifteen forty-one got that language from, right? Let's, let's go back to it real quick. Resolution fifteen forty-one, right? The United Nations put together, they said, okay. So if we're going to offer them something free political aspiration, let's see which one they choose. If they want to be free, let them be free. But maybe they'll sign a contract that puts them right back in dependency, right? So now you scroll down, right? Principle six. And it gives you these options. And it says, uh, you can be independent, sovereign independent, or you can be free. Because people like the word free. Their eyes go to it, right? Because they think that's a shortcut, right? So now you go back to the Charter. So the colonial space was like, ah, let's offer them free. Because it's based on their self-determination. If they choose it, you got to see the game they play. They put three options in front of you, right? Going back to it. They put three options in front of you. Which one are you going to choose? Right? Based upon your injury or how quickly you try to move, you see? Okay, so, so from the top. B, to develop self-government, to take due account of the political aspirations of the peoples and to assist them in the progressive development of their free political institutions according to the particular circumstances of each territory and its peoples and their varying stages of advancement. So the Moors are rising up, right? At varying degrees. You see? That's what this is all about. But if you get stuck on thirty-three degrees, you'll never get to a hundred percent. You see? So the Shriner was all about pinning down the tassel thirty-three degrees. That's pinning down the Moors. Don't let the Moors grow, you see? But the Moors, we rock our fes. We, we let the tassel swing three hundred and sixty degrees. How we proving that? That we understand, understood that we have to bring it full circle? Did we understand the? Did we understand the procedure of that? No, we started talking about enforcing the Constitution of United States of America, but the people on the Palau Island ain't talking about enforcing the Constitution of the United States of America, keep in mind, the United States of America colonized Palau! Even in the seventies, they knew they needed their own constitution. Now, you also have to understand something else. If they drafted their constitution in nineteen seventy-nine, right? Put it, put it in full force of effect, nineteen eighty-one. What else was going on around nineteen eighty? Well, you, you had Moors out there that called themselves being a Grand Sheik, putting together Grand Sheik Roundtable. Nineteen eighty. And turn around, tell all the Moors to enforce the Constitution of the United States of America, nineteen eighty? Roundtable meetings instead of constitutional assemblies. So you gotta understand, when you put these leaders out there, they've been holding it down thirty, forty, fifty years, and they never pushed the people forward, what does that mean? It don't take no forty, fifty years to get liberation, I'm gonna tell you that right now. Section C.
C, to further international peace and security. D, to promote constructive measures of development, to encourage research, and to cooperate with one another and when and where appropriate, with specialized international bodies with a view to the practical achievement of the social, economic, and scientific purposes set forth in this article.
Pause, okay, so Section D. To promote constructive measures of development, we're supposed to be developing, de- development, that's forward motion. We haven't been developing. Only thing we've been doing, if, if this was a football game, you know what we've been doing the whole time? If we was on offense, we've been running behind the line of scrimmage the whole time, just back and forth behind the line of scrimmage, we never got a first down. We ain't had a first down in one hundred years. We've been running behind the line of scrimmage and never crossed over the line of scrimmage. Nothing moving forward. That's what's happening. We've been faking it. Section D, to promote constructive measurement, measures of development, development is to move forward, to encourage research, and to cooperate with one another. So we were supposed to be cooperating with the Americans. Not calling them the devil? We're supposed to figure out how do we move the ball forward in unison? 'Cause we all gotta cohabitate, because the Americans are in what? A treaty, bilateral treaty with the Moors that says Treaty of Peace and Friendship. That's just not some cool slogan, that's treaty language. That's an obligation. We gotta maintain friendly relations. That's what Article twenty-four of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship says, right? It's about friendly applications and friendly arrangements, this is treaty language. Now, that pity party, pointing fingers, here we go, Section D, "To promote constructive measures of development, to encourage research, and to cooperate with one another, and when and where appropriate, with specialized international bodies with a view to the practical achievement of the social, economic, and scientific purposes." So therefore, if good brother Martin Luther King read this, he said, "Wait a minute." Where, where is appropriate, we're supposed to be doing what? Working with who? With specialized international bodies in order to decolonize. Do you see now why good brother Ilmael Shabazz was hanging out with the United Nations? He was looking for assistance. This is an obligation, this is a treaty. But, our leaders don't read this out loud. Tell me any Negro, Black, and colored spiritual leaders that read the Charter out loud, they don't do it? The Grand Sheiks and the National Grand Sheiks don't read this out loud? NAACP don't read this out loud? The HBCUs don't read this out loud? Anybody who claims they helping our community does not read the Charter out loud, and the Charter is about decolonization. It's about human rights. It's about state rights, and you need the state in order for you to invoke your own rights. But you asking everybody else to protect your rights when you could've protected your own. This is what the leaders should've known. Section E.
E, to transmit regularly to the Secretary General for information purposes, subject to such limitation as security and constitutional considerations may require. Statistical and other information of a technical nature relating to economic, social, and educational conditions in the territories for which they are respectively responsible, other than those territories to which Chapters twelve and thirteen apply.
Okay, so here is Section E, right, this is what we learned about, uh, Resolution fifteen forty-one, excuse me. Fifteen forty-one, right? Scroll back up, about Section E, seventy-three E, right? Seventy-three E. So when we start to read Section seventy-three E, it was an obligation for the member states, right, the colonial states who performed administration over the Moors' empire, and they're acting like trustees over the Moors' empire, 'cause they got the Moors in a naturalized status, were supposed to be writing correspondence to the Secretary General, right? You got the Secretary General was supposed to receive what? Regular transmission from who? The colonial states. Now, should the Moors send correspondence to the Secretary General as well by varying stage of advancement? Absolutely. Why do I say that? Because we also have to recognize the Charter. So now that we recognize, we become parties to it, because we became part of this treaty, now we have to follow the instructions as well. Now, the Moors aren't member states of the organization, but we still recognize its provisions as being a treaty, you understand what I'm saying? So therefore, it says, "Section E, to transmit regularly to the Secretary General for information purposes, subject to such limitations as security and constitutional considerations may require." So the Moors needed a constitution. You reaching out to the Secretary General, you telling him what? Uh, "We as Moors, we declare our independence," right, everybody got Declaration of Independence. Then you let them know what? You have a constitution. Right, that's called nationalism and constitutionalism. Those two go hand in hand, it's right there in the instructions. This is why the Moors don't read this Charter out loud, 'cause then you, maybe the Moors will start asking questions, "Well, do we need a constitution?" And the answer all, the whole time is what? Yes. This is why your Moors American teachers don't read this stuff out loud to you, they don't want you to know. And the Negro, Black, and colored spiritual leaders in their churches definitely ain't gonna read out loud, 'cause they want you to abide by their church bylaws. 'Cause they say they got a constitution in their church. And they'll tell you their church is a state, which is a lie. No, they ain't no church of state. Okay, let's go ahead and read Article seventy-four.
Article seventy-four, "Members of the United Nations also agree that their policy in respect of the territories to which this chapter applies, no less than in respect of their metropolitan areas, must be based on the general principle of good neighborliness, due account being taken of the interests as well-being or the rest of the world in social, economic, and commercial matters."
Alright, so in other words, the colonists have to respect the Moors' rights. Right, at least through this Charter, this is, this is the language set forth. But the Moors also had an obligation, because our treaty said that we had to be what? The sovereign authority, it's not a matter of choice of whether we wanted to govern our empire or not. It wasn't a choice. The language is in our treaty, our Moors' treaties, the Act of the States of nineteen oh-six said, "You shall do what? Be the sovereign authority." You gotta govern, Moors, whether you like it or not. Stop blaming a white man for your problems. You start blaming the Moroccan that's inside of you that you haven't taken the time to address and put into action, you've been buffering. Now, why isn't we've been buffering as a people, as a collective whole? Why we told you on the front end? 'Cause our leaders. Like they always say, "If you scared, go to church." And when you go to church, you there with a whole bunch of scared people. Those end up being your leaders. You gotta get out of those organizations. Khalid Mohammed got out the organization. Malcolm X got out the organization. My, uh, good brother Martin Luther King was out the organization. My good brother Nubu Jawali, was he in the organization? Yes, but he was trying to get the Moors out of it. He was using the temple as a pass-through to start taking appropriate steps towards statehood. But you don't start waving a Moroccan flag and talking, talking about politics if you don't have any intentions of taking next steps towards a political recognition. The man said we were Moroccans. He understood what we need to do next. He was just using the temple as a pass-through, keep it in mind, temple goes back to what word? Templar, right? Knights Templar. What are knights templars about? They were protecting what? Land, right? They would meet at these temples, the court, the courtyard, right? That way, they'd come together and organize on what they was gonna do as knights templars. Now, we'd turn the temple into a real church, instead of understanding it as a, as a, as a place where you gathered to put together your energies, to unite, to understand your political obligations. That's what knight templars do, they was protecting the land for the people. But we turn it into a church. Continue. Now, keep in mind, wh- while we reading all this, keep it germane. The last couple of classes, we, we briefly went over this, it's called Responsibility of States for International Rougho Acts of two thousand one, what's that about? Well, we read down to the first four articles, right, about how you bring reparations against another state for injuring you, right? So if there's an injury against your state, you can sue, you can bring a tort against another state, right? But you can never get reparations if you're stateless. And if you're stateless, that means you're lawless. You don't have no laws, and therefore, you'll never get no justice. Alright, so going down to Article four. We got down to Article four. Okay? And it was about the attributions of conduct to a state. Right, Article four, conduct of organs of a state, right? So whether a state violates you, or the organs of that state, it said the FBI, that's an organ, right, or an FBI agent, he's also an organ. The word "organ" is a generic word, one size fits all, right? The state of Texas is an organ. Their counties is an organ. The municipality buildings is an organ, et cetera, right? So if you wanna bring suit against a state, now you can utilize this treaty. But first, you yourself have to be affiliated to what? A state, so your state gotta bring the suit, not you as an individual. It's state on state dispute. And our people been stateless, while simultaneously sitting here begging our adopted stepmother, 'cause our stepmother adopted us as Moors, an annihilation. And we sitting here talking smack to our stepmom, wondering why she ain't looking out for us, it's because the stepmom knows exactly who your real mother is. You were supposed to return back to her when you got to a certain age. Now that you grown up and you know that you ain't supposed to be a part of that family, you been trying to get out of it, while simultaneously trying to tell your stepmother, which is America, what she better do for you. She better do this, and she better do that, and the whole time, she looking at you saying, "Going back to your mama." Your mama's called Morocco, the Empire Morocco. And you ain't gotta travel far, it's just, just like that, with an independence.
Right.
You, you sign off on what? You pledge your allegiance, you, you repatriate back to the state, it's called state. You gotta repatriate back to the state. Okay, listen. These are seven states. So overnight, as an example, you got Antak, right, as a state, we, we signed a constitution. We had Declaration of Independence, signed a constitution, we deposited the rest of it all out with the United Nations, and just like that overnight, we became Moroccans again. We nationalized, we repatriated back to the state. Still standing on the same land. But now, we recognize the land as the Empire Morocco and not America, it's called jurisdiction. That's bound inside what's called a constitution, what's the name of your constitution? That's the question, and do you recognize yourself as what? American or Moroccan? There is no in-between in this land. Now, don't get me wrong, are they Indians? Yeah, but guess what? That's between the United States of America and Indians, they ain't got nothing to do with Moroccans. Those three different personalities. Moroccans deal with who? Americans, that's what our treaties say. Our treaties don't say nothing about Indians. So that's none of your business. Let the Indians deal with the United States, 'cause that's what their treaty says. Indian and United States of America, you ain't got nothing to do with that. You have to repatriate back to your state, okay? Alright, so now that we're studying how to bring reparations against a state to repair a wrong, right? Okay, that's, that's the point we're making here. First, we have to, we have to be leaders to move out front to establish states, right? Nationalism, constitutionalism, right, let's take it to the board. Right now, we're going over the Charter of the United Nations of Chapter eleven, Article seventy-three, it's about the Declaration Regarding Nonself-Governing Territories, right? So the, the colonists declared, right? They declared they will look out for the indigenous people. But they also declared that when the, when the indigenous people declared their independence, they would assist, right? They would help with the development, right? So it's about what? It's about decolonization, transformation of trust territories throughout the Empire of Morocco. Let me read it again. What's the objective, once you understand the Charter reforms, it says what? It's about what? Article seventy-three is about decolonization, transformation of trust territories throughout the Empire Morocco. You gotta transform it, how? With a constitution. Another drop-down box, what's this about? It's about a Declaration of Independence, that's what we needed. It's about constitutionalism, we needed constitution, that's Article seventy-three E. In other words, seventy-three E says, "When you got a constitution, you let the United Nations know, the colonial state, the administrative, administration state also have to let the United Nations know, because of your constitution, that's the key." They giving you the answer to, to the test in Article seventy-three E, saying you need a constitution. That's what gets the ball rolling along with what? Your Declaration of Independence. Why is the Declaration of Independence important? It's because they wanna make sure you didn't deposit some constitution, 'cause you think you're a church.
Right.
Churches can't declare independence, think about that for a minute. So therefore, if you need a Declaration of Independence, it's for who? People. For the politics of the people and not some church organization, that's why you need the Declaration of Independence. The independence is for people and not for organizations. So once you deposit a Declaration of Independence, because now you seeking what? Constitutionalism, which is a form of nationalism. After that, you doing what? It's just simply your enforcement, you got enforcement of treaties, you start to get to work. You start to do what? Enforce the justice of your state. 'Cause you can justify your rights. 'Cause your state got three branches of government. So when people keep saying, "No justice, no peace", guess what? The people always had the power in their hands to get their own justice. The people have delayed their own justice. 'Cause we've been in blind followership of cowardly lions, and that's the truth. If, if, if your leaders come from a religious organization, you're just gonna be buffering. You gonna turn into Moses, you following Moses. That's no disrespect to religious organizations, but let's keep it real. There's a reason why they say, "If you scared, go to church." And the church leaders have been out there marching, and we've been following them. Which means that we must've been scared too. But those days are over, we moving forward. Alright, so this is what this is all about, right? Moving forward and bring reparations, well, why, why, why am I talking about reparations? Okay, now you gotta go back to the Charter. You notice it's about territories, okay? Nonself-governing territories. Non-self-governing territories. So you got inhabitants, this Article seventy-three of the Charter, inhabitants of the territories. So therefore, in the meantime, the administration has what? They have civil and criminal jurisdiction over these territories. They have what's called territorial jurisdiction. Territorial jurisdiction, 'cause why? 'Cause they running the government. If you have your own government, they know then, they can have what's called extraterritorial jurisdiction. Then right now, they got territorial jurisdiction. But once you establish your government, your state, if they try to now oppress you or suppress you, right? Subordinate you, it would be called extraterritorial jurisdiction if they're trying on you. But as of right now, if you have yet to repatriate back to your state, you still coming with their territorial jurisdiction. So if we're gonna bring some reparations against them, it's because potentially they're still violating our state rights of our territory. Let's, let's get a basic understanding of what is extraterritorial jurisdiction. No, from the top.
Eighteen U.S.Code thirty forty-two, extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Pause, okay, so why are we looking up the United States codes? Because we're just trying to get basic definitions, right? These, these codes don't have nothing to do with our Moroccan jurisdiction, but we're looking up definitions. 'Cause Noham Drawali said what? Study Europeans, right? So you can learn what? How to run government. So let's look up a definition. This, this statute gave nothing to do with our Moroccan jurisdiction, but we're looking at definitions. What do they consider legal language? Alright, 'cause you need to understand how they're thinking. You must always understand, if you were playing chess, you gotta understand what is it that your opponent, your competitor is trying to do on the chessboard? You gotta look at their angles too. Right? Okay. From the top.
Section thirty forty-one of this title shall apply in any country where the United States exercises extraterritorial jurisdiction for the arrest and removal therefrom to the United States of any citizen or national of the United States who is a fugitive from justice charged with or convicted of the commission of any offense against the United States.
Pause, start from the top again.
Section thirty forty-one of this title shall apply in any country where the United States exercises extraterritorial jurisdiction for the arrest and removal therefrom to the United States of any citizen or national of the United States who is a fugitive from justice charged with or convicted of the commission of any offense against the United States. And shall also apply throughout the United States for the arrest and removal therefrom to the jurisdiction of any officer or representative of the United States vested with judicial authority in any country in which the United States exercises extraterritorial jurisdiction. Of any citizen or national of the United States who is a fugitive from justice charged with or convicted of the commission of any offense against the United States in any country where it exercises extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Okay, pause, thank you very much. So what's this about? Okay. Take it from the top. Section thirty forty-one of this type, extraterritorial jurisdiction shall apply in any country where the United States exercises extraterritorial jurisdiction for their arrest and removal therefrom to the United States, to the United States. So it's arrest, now they bringing you back to the United States of any citizen or national of the United States. Just pause right there. What's happening? So if the United States still considers you a citizen, then they can now go into someone else's jurisdiction and bring you back into their jurisdiction, 'cause they're still considering, considering you what? A citizen of the United States. Right? They claiming you as property of the United States. Because you recognize the United States, the United States recognize you, right? 'Cause you're a citizen of the United States. So therefore, the United States, from a federal perspective, federal, and then we deal with the several union states, and then you got the several union states, and they got counties underneath them. The federal government now has a right to do what? Reach into the jurisdiction of the state of Alabama. That's jurisdiction, that's extraterritorial jurisdiction. They're extending it to Alabama, because they're looking for a federal fugitive, right? So that's extraterritorial jurisdiction, because the feds don't have automatic jurisdiction in the several union states. They have to have extraterritorial jurisdictions, meaning they have to have a right to now pick up someone as a United States citizen who done something to breach federal law. Okay, let's make this applicable to the Moors. The Moors, the whole time, kept saying, we're not citizens of the United States, and the United States is still locking up Moors. Why? 'Cause the United States still recognizes Moors as still being what? Citizen of the United States, no matter what your mouth says. Everything you say, when you say, oh, I got my nationality card from Army Bay Publications. I got my nationality card from my temple, 'cause my temple's a state. All that's patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious. 'Cause you never repatriated back to an actual state that has what? A Declaration of Independence, constitution that creates the nationalism, and enforcing treaty, because you become party to say treaty, because now you have a state. Right? So the United States, what's called extraterritorial jurisdiction, meaning now they're, they're reaching into another jurisdiction and grabbing you, pulling you back into the federal jurisdiction. So the Moors, all this time, kept saying, man, they don't have jurisdiction over me. Yes, they do. Why? 'Cause you never followed the instructions of the treaties to return back to a Moroccan state. You gotta go from one state directly into another state, just like Dorothy. Dorothy went from one state of Kansas, went right into Oz. From Oz, right back into Kansas. There was no middle ground. But see, Moors are stuck in the middle ground, because they think they have left the United States. No, you still in the United States, 'cause you never pledged your allegiance back to a Moroccan state. There's no Moorish American with three branches of government, constitution, the whole nine yards, where they enforcing Moorish American laws? Show me Moorish American statutes, it don't exist. Who's the Moorish American chief judge of the Supreme Court of the Moorish Americans? It doesn't exist. Who, who's the, uh, uh, executive branch leader? Who's the, who's the leader of the executive branch? Who's the leader of the legislative branch? They don't have nothing, they can't answer these questions, you know why? Because these Moors, I'm talking about the Moorish Americans teachers, have taught their students that your state is your state of mind. It is absolutely asinine to think that a state is your state of mind. It's called an abstract, by the way, but it's asinine. What does asin, as, asinine mean? Extremely what? Stupid and foolish. We got people on an island already got constitution, they've already decolonized, they checked all the boxes of Declaration of Independence, they got constitution, they got real nationalism, and now they enforcing treaties, they got into relations with other states. While Moors over there talking about, your state is your state of mind. And this is why they keep giving Moors sanity tests. See what's happening? So when you up here, you looking at extraterritorial jurisdiction, the United States have jurisdiction over anyone who's still what? A citizen of the United States. No matter what your nationality card says. You have to understand what's called, you have to renounce the jurisdiction of the United States by what? Actually becoming a citizen or national of another state. Even you go to Colombia, you can, you can repatriate, and let's say you go to Colombia, say, I wanna be a national of Colombia. Okay, then you have to renounce the citizenship of the United States. Until then, the United States can go to Colombia, still snatch you up, even though you got a dual citizenship passport. You still a citizen of the United States, it's just dual citizenship. So therefore, the United States still got extraterritorial jurisdiction, even go to Colombia, it snatch you up if you broke some type of federal law. You have to renounce the citizenship and then do, do what? Pledge allegiance to the new state and then have that evidence that you did so. Why? Because now you're on the registration of another state. That state now protects you. You see? Now you come on the territorial jurisdiction of the other state. But until then, you still on the territorial jurisdiction of the United States. However, okay, listen. These seven states have their own jurisdiction out. The Moors are repatriated back to the state. Now the state provides territorial jurisdiction over the Moors who repatriated and nationalized through application with these seven states. Now, if the United States tried to extend their extraterritorial jurisdiction within our jurisdiction to try to detain a Moroccan, that would be a crime. That's a violation of extraterritorial jurisdiction, that's disallowed in law. You understand what's happening? So therefore, if they violate your rights, okay? Now you can bring reparations, 'cause we're talking about bringing reparations. We'll learn more about that as we keep reading the responsibility of states for internationally wrongful acts. So if the conduct, right? If the conduct of the United States and any of its organs now breaches your right as a Moroccan, because now you pledged your allegiance back to Moroccan state, now the United States reaches into your jurisdiction to try to now detain you, arrest you, adjudicate you, that's called extraterritorial jurisdiction. And that's disallowed, that's illegal in international law. Okay? Now, listen. The Moors have to understand something. What, what do I have up here? Good brother Joseph, from the top.
International Court of Justice, reports of judgments, advisory opinions, and orders. Case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. France versus the United States of America, judgment of August twenty-seventh, nineteen fifty-two.
Okay. What happened in this case? The United States of America have the audacity to fight with France about the rights of Americans. The United States of America tried to say, uh, France, you trying to use Moroccan laws against us. You trying to use Moorish laws against us, and we don't have to listen to no Moorish laws, why? 'Cause the United States of America felt as though they have what? Territorial jurisdiction over Moors. 'Cause Moors would call themselves what? Americans. So the United States of America said, no, these Moors ain't Moors no more, they're what? Americans. And France was like, no, there's still Moroccans that's been naturalized as Americans, you see? So the United States is like, nah, we don't go to court, we're talking about this at the ICJ. Let's see what the judges say about this, right? So now you come down, you gotta start understanding, why am I pulling this up? You gotta understand that because we acquiesced, because we didn't know who we were, and we kept saying we were Americans, Americans still had jurisdiction over Moors who were still citizens of the United States. Okay? So we as Moors have to understand, we have to repatriate back to a Moroccan state by application. We just couldn't say it out of our mouth, it don't work like that. That everything is about paper. Paper documentary evidence, you see? So listen. Now you wanna find out, we're gonna read this again, okay? Gonna read this again. Okay, so now, you come down to page, and the judgment, page one ninety-five, the judgment, alright? We're gonna skip over a lot of stuff, but I'm gonna go straight, straight in, okay? It's about this extraterritorial rights. This is what the United States was fighting over, they wanted extraterritorial rights over Moors. Because Moors are still in Morocco, whether they know it or not. Even the United States of America saying they in Morocco. So therefore, the Moors are still in Morocco. But it has what's called an overlay, an overlay over top of Morocco, you see? So the Moors are still in Morocco, they got an overlay called America. And the Moors are recognizing themselves as being Americans. You see? But they still Moroccans, 'cause that's their nationality. But they have a political status of being Americans. So now Americans want extraterritorial rights to be able to reach into the jurisdiction of the Empire Morocco and snatch Americans out of the Empire Morocco, back into the jurisdiction of the United States, 'cause they still recognizing the Moors as what? Americans. Even though they in the jurisdiction of Morocco, they still Americans on paper, 'cause those Moors who think they ran away from the, from the, um, um, from the plantation, they didn't pledge their allegiance to another state, which is Moroccan state. So you gotta go from one state to another. That's it. You don't go from state to stateless, and that's what the Moorish Americans think they done, they think they're stateless. They think that they gotten out of the United States of America. No, prove that you pledged your allegiance to another state, Moorish Americans. They can't prove it. So therefore, by default, they're still what? Americans. Even though all the Moors are still walking around in the Empire Morocco, but their political designation is still American. So the United States is stretching extraterritorial rights, they're reaching and grabbing that Moor who thinks he's in Morocco, and he's not, he's still American, they pulling you back into the jurisdiction, 'cause you can't prove that you are Moroccans. And you sure as hell can't prove that you're Moorish American, 'cause ain't no such thing. That's the worst part. Listen. Let's find out what happened to the Moors, that way you can see that even the world court has, has said for the record, these Moors are under the jurisdiction of the United States of America. But the, the grand sheiks and the national, grand sheiks keep lying to the Moors and telling the Moors, aw, man, get a nationality card from Army Bay Publications or the temple, and you all of a sudden ain't in the jurisdiction of the United States of America no more. This is ridiculous. Look, this is what you call gross negligence. It's a criminal act, when you try to tell someone that this document and this piece of plastic card that's patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious is gonna help you with a criminal case. That's called malpractice.
Skipping all the administrative that goes along with statehood.
This is what the Moors have done to each other, I'm talking about the Moorish American teachers, okay? Uh, let's take it from the top. Okay, uh, brother Joseph.
The two declarations made by France and Spain in nineteen fourteen show that they both regarded the expression, renovance?
Renounce.
Oh, excuse me, renounce a reclamer.
Right, so that means in French, that means to renounce, um, reclamer, right? They renounce what's happening to European states, just let you know. They're all relinquishing jurisdiction over the Moors. They're all saying, we don't longer have regime of capitulation over the Moors anymore. Everybody was signing a declaration and giving it to France, was France was to be facto sultan because of the Treaty of Fairs of nineteen twelve. So now all the European states, France petitioned, saying, hey, man, give up your claim over the Moors, because now France is running the show, right? So a lot of European states is signing off on a declaration saying, we no longer have jurisdiction over the Moors. Now France has it, you see? Uh, from the top.
The two declarations made by France and Spain in nineteen fourteen show that they both regarded the expression, renounce a reclamer, as equivalent to a renunciation of the rights in question. In the Declaration of March seventh, nineteen fourteen, the French government bound itself to renounce equally the rights and privileges. In the later Declaration of November seventeenth, nineteen fourteen, France gave effect to this obligation by using the expression, renounce a reclamer. It is clear, therefore, that both France and Spain regarded this expression as proper for bringing about a complete surrender or renunciation of the rights and privileges in question.
Alright, so pause right there, so the ICJ is looking at this saying, okay, the Europeans are giving up their rights and they're giving up their privileges, 'cause that was the question. Was the question, did they have a right? Or was it a privilege for them to do what? Naturalize the Moors, right? Just, they say, okay, let's give up, the Europeans get up their rights and their privileges, if in fact it was a question, and France is getting, getting them to sign off on these declarations, okay? Everybody did it, but who? United States of Americans, right? Okay? You gotta understand history, let's continue.
On July thirty-first, nineteen sixteen, the French ambassador at Washington sent to the Secretary of State of the United States the text of the declaration signed with reference to the abrogation of capitulation in the French zone of Morocco by all the powers signatory of the Al Jazeera's conference and by the South American republics. In the text thus transmitted, the expression used in English was relinquishes its claim to all the rights and privileges growing out of the capitulation regime. It is thus clear that at the date, long before the present dispute had arisen, France regarded the expression relinquish its claim, or in other words, renounce a reclamer, as bringing about the abrogation of the privileges in question.
Paul, so, so the United States of America said, okay, when it comes to regime of capitulations, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll give that up, but yet they turn around and say what? But we still got extraterritorial jurisdiction over these Moors, because these Moors haven't declared no independence. Somebody gotta oversee these Moors with the government. So therefore, you gotta understand what capitulation regime means. It means what? Under war, okay? So, so the United States of America and the European states saying, yeah, we're not holding on to these Moors under use of force. Listen to my words. Regime of capitulations is you took over a land by use of force. Now, the United States of America saying, we're not holding these Moors on use of force. They themselves saying they're Americans, all on their own. So we'll, we'll say we ain't holding them use of force, but we still got extraterritorial jurisdiction over them, because we got governments and they don't. Continue.
The declaration made by France and Spain of March seventh, nineteen fourteen, was one of the series of agreements negotiated by France with more than twenty foreign states for the surrender of their jurisdictional and other extraterritorial rights so far as concern the French zone of Morocco.
Paul, so twenty foreign states, right? Twenty foreign states, right? Twenty foreign states for the surrender of their jurisdictional and other extraterritorial rights so far as concern the French zone of Morocco. You see what's happening? Twenty-four European states, a lot of European states. Saying they don't, they no longer are holding the Moors under use of force. But some of them even said, we're not even holding extraterritorial rights either, you see? They were relinquishing any rights or claim over the Moors and letting, letting France deal with these Moors now, you see? But look how many European states, twenty foreign states, you see? Continue.
At least seventeen of these agreements use the expression renounce a reclamer as a means of bringing about a complete abrogation of all rights and privileges arising out of the regime of capitulations. They are referred to in the counter memorial in the following words, for the surrender of dictional and other extrater- extraterritorial rights, and again, for the renunciation of extraterritorial rights. Further, all of the states which had signed these agreements abandoned forthwith the exercise of consular jurisdiction or other capitulatory rights or privileges in the French zone.
Paul, now keep in mind, they're talking about Moors. They call them Moors, Moor subjects, or they call them proteges. Because protege means what? The protective ones, right? They put the Moors under protective status. That's why they call it the sacred trust, right? The sacred trust, okay? Because they were trustees over these Moors and the land, okay?
In these circumstances, it is necessary to conclude that the Spanish Declaration of March seventh, nineteen fourteen brought about the surrender or renunciation of all Spanish jurisdictional or other extraterritorial rights in the French zone and, and an abrogation of those provisions of the Spanish Treaty of eighteen sixty-one, which concerned the rights and privileges arising out of the regime of capitulations. The court therefore cannot accept the contention that the United States is entitled by virtue of the most favored nation clause to invoke in respect of the French zone those provisions of the Spanish Treaty of eighteen sixty-one, which concern consular jurisdiction.
Paul, so the ICJ tells you, the United States of America says, the court, the International Court of Justice, therefore cannot accept the contention that the United States is entitled by virtue of the most favored nation clause to invoke in respect of the French zone those provisions of the Spanish Treaty of eighteen sixty-one, which concern consular jurisdiction. What's happening here? Remember in class one nineteen, I told y'all about the Brit- British treaty, right? Great Britain signed a treaty with the Sultan, right, eighteen fifty-six. Great Britain was invoking, it was called the most favored nation clause, right? Then the United States of America says, we wanna put these Moors, make these Moors citizens as well. We're gonna make them American citizens, because Great Britain just made the Moors British citizens. Where Spain was doing the same thing, Germany, all the, uh, uh, European states was making them Moors citizens. So under the most favored nation clause, the United States of America could say, well, we can make the Moors Americans, because the other European states did it too. But now France has proven, well, the other European states have now removed their claim over the Moors. So guess what happens now? Now, the United States of America can't say, well, the other Europeans doing it, why can't we? So the ICJ saying, well, you can't use the most favored nation clause, because the other nations aren't keeping the Moors under capitulation regime, right? Under use of force. The United States can't use this as a legal defense anymore, okay? Can't use that as legal defense to hold on to the Moors. Continue.
The fourth contention of the United States is that the extensive consular jurisdiction as it existed in Morocco in the year eighteen eighty was recognized and confirmed by the provisions of the Madrid Convention and that the United States as a party to that convention thereby acquired an autonomous right to the exercise of such jurisdictions independently of the operation of the most favored nation clause.
Paul, okay, so the United States is invoking this eighteen eighty Madrid Convention. Article fifteen, right, paragraph what? Two. They saying, man, we can hold these Moors without any restriction. That's what the multilateral treaties say, right? So they said, why do we have to give up jurisdiction over the Moors just because the other Europeans did? So the United States is using Moors treaties as their legal defense to hold on to Moors. But yet, Moors have no clue about these treaties and understanding why the United States feels though they have an extra territorial right to hold on to Moors, because Moors are still listed as what? Americans. They ain't listed as Moroccans, and, and the Moors themselves don't even call themselves Moroccans, right? So therefore, the United States is not forcing Moors to call themselves Moorish Americans, are they? Is the United States forcing Moors to call themselves Moorish Americans? No. They're not. Moorish Americans doing that all by themselves. Self-determination, that's right.
There, there can be no doubt that the exercise of the consular jurisdiction in Morocco in the year eighteen eighty was, was general, or that the convention preposed the exist-
Presuppose.
Predis- presuppose?
Yes.
The extent of such jurisdiction. It dealt with the special position of proteges and contained provisions for the exercise of jurisdiction with regard to them.
Paul, so who's the them? Who's the proteges? Who's the them? Okay, you go to year eighteen eighty, you go to Treaty Madrid, who are they talking about, okay? Who are they talking about? Eighteen eighty, right? Eighteen eighty, Treaty Madrid, right, about who, right, of protections. So it's about the who? The proteges. See? Proteges, protections, proteges in Morocco, you see? Yeah, remember protege is what? A French word, right? Protege, it's a French word, right? So France was doing what? But France took over the new what? Protectorates, that's. France was the new protector of the Moors. So you use the word protege, because it's a French word, because France took over as a de facto sultan to oversee the Moors. Okay, now, let, let's go to, let's prove that. Let's now go to, uh, Treaty Affairs nineteen twelve, right? Okay, now you go down to what? Article six. You go down to article six. Okay, France is putting charge of the Moors. Article six. Okay, Brother Joseph.
Article six. The diplomatic and consular agents of France shall be charged with the representation and protection of Moroccan subjects and interests abroad.
You see? So right there, it says, article six. The diplomatic and consular agents of France shall be charged with the representation and protections, protege, protections of who? Moroccans. You see that? Moroccan subjects. Moors are Moroccans. France responsible for what? Representation and protections, you see? And this is how the Moors ended up become proteges. Because France was taking over from nineteen twelve all the way until March second, nineteen fifty-six. France was to be facto sultan, right? You understand what's happening? Just why you turn protege, okay? Okay, so from the top.
There can be no doubt that the exercise of consular jurisdiction in Morocco in the year eighteen eighty was general, or that the convention presuppose the existence of such jurisdiction. It dealt with the special position of proteges and contained provisions for the exercise of jurisdiction with regards to them.
Paul, so eighteen eighty, now we go to the Madrid Convention again, right? And you go down to what? Article fifteen, right? This is what the United States is talking about. Article fifteen. And it says, article fifteen, go ahead and read that from the top.
Right of protection in Morocco, July third, eighteen eighty, article fifteen. Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco shall after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him or her to obtain such naturalizations, choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire and obligation to quit Morocco, unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. Foreign naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the law of each country shall be continued to them as regards all its effects without any restrictions.
So the United States is invoking this article fifteen, paragraph two, and the United States said, uh, United States acquired these subjects of Morocco as Americans now. And now our jurisdiction has what? Has no restrictions, without any restrictions. So they're telling France, man, you ain't got no, you can't tell us what to do with these naturalized Moors who are now Americans. So therefore, we still have extraterritorial jurisdiction over them. Why? Because the Moors are still technically where? In the empire of what? Morocco, because it's the land's jurisdiction. But the United States of America is invoking paragraph two saying, yeah, but we can extend our hand into what? The empire and grab these, these Moors who are still what? Naturalized. They're naturalized, which means they're still Americans. So therefore, even though everybody's in Morocco, but these Moors are now Americans because they've been naturalized heretofore, right? They've been naturalized heretofore. Heretofore means after this date, what date? July third, eighteen eighty. So now the United States finds themselves in ICJ nineteen fifty to nineteen fifty-two, you see? Like seventy years later, they, they argue about, can the United States hold on to these Moors? You see? Go back to it from the top.
There can be no doubt that the exercise of consular jurisdiction in Morocco in the year eighteen eighty was general, or that the convention presuppose the existence of such jurisdiction. It dealt with the special position of proteges and contained provisions for the exercise of jurisdiction with regards to them.
Paul, so therefore, the United States of America got jurisdiction over the Moors, you see? ICJ isn't even talking about this. Why? Because they're reading the treaties. Moorish Americans don't read the treaties. They have no clue. Keep in mind, the ICJ is only going back reading treaties. They're, they're making a ruling and judgment based upon what? Going back and reading the treaties. But the Moors never take the time to read the treaties, because their Moorish American teachers never told them about the treaties, and how are they ever supposed to know about the treaties? Much less about the International Court of Justice, because the Moorish American teachers don't tell them about the Charter of the United Nations. If you don't talk about the Charter of the United Nations, you're not gonna talk about the International Court of Justice. Moors never had no clue about this case, and it's talking about you in nineteen fifty-two. Continue from here.
On the other hand, it is equally clear that there were no provisions of the convention which expressly brought about a confirmation of the then existing system of consular jurisdiction or its establishment as an independent and autonomous right. The purpose and objects of this convention were stated in its preamble in the following words. The necessity of establishing on fixed and uniform basis the exercise of the right of protection in Morocco and, and of settling certain questions connected therewith in these circumstances. The court cannot adopt a construction by implication of the provisions of the Madrid Convention, which would go beyond the scope of its declared purpose and objects. Further, this contention would involve radical change and additions to the provisions of the convention. The court in its opinion, interpretation of peace treaties, second phase, ICJ reports, nineteen fifty, page two twenty-nine, stated, it is the duty of the court to interpret the treaties, not to revise them.
Paul, so why is the court talking like this? Okay, you gotta catch this last paragraph, okay? So right here, it says, okay, the purpose and objects of this convention, Treaty Madrid eighteen eighty, were stated in its preamble. In the following words, the necessity of establishing on the fixed and uniform basis their exercise of the right of protection. So who had a right of protection? Moors. But it also gave the, the foreign colonies, the foreign states an opportunity to protect the Moors, to put them under protection. So if the Moors had a human right, right, to come under protection, because they're being protected by the Europeans, but the Europeans had a right also for their states to put the Moors under protection, because the Sultan signed this treaty. But then the Moors in article fifteen, paragraph one said what? Moors had a human right to do what? Return back to Morocco, right? And choose between the entire submission of the laws of the empire. And this is where the Moors are not returning back to choose what appeared. They have to fill out an application to nationalize and repatriate back to the state. Nobody on planet Earth can leave one state and go to another state and think just because they got on a plane, they're no longer a citizen of Nigeria. If Nigerians go somewhere else, let's say they go to Germany, just because they got off a plane and they live in Germany don't mean they no longer have citizenship of Nigeria. Nigeria still holds on to the property of that Nigerian, because that Nigerian never did what? Renounced the citizenship of Nigeria. It's still active. So Moorish Americans think they just ran over into a different jurisdiction, but they never renounced. But when you renounce, you gotta go from one state to another state almost immediately. Moorish Americans never did that. So they're still Americans. They never renounced, number one. Only way to renounce, you gotta renounce with who? The Moroccan state. Okay, go back to Treaty Madrid. Says right here, you, you gotta pledge your allegiance to the state. Okay. Article fifteen, I got it. Any subject of Morocco, paragraph one. Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco shall after having remained for a length of time equal to that which have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization have to choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire. So how do you choose the entire submission? You, you agree. You just don't say it out of your mouth. Everybody signs paper. That's government. It's an administrative reform. You literally have to fill out a form to now repatriate back to the state. Why? It has to be judicial. It's a procedure, right? Anybody who, who goes in front of a judge, even just to change your name, you gotta go in front of the judge just to change your name. Do you think you ain't gotta go in front of some judge to pledge your allegiance to another state? And it's a reform. People gotta sign off on stuff to recognize you, to put you on the registration. If they don't know you're in that territory, you're just like, tada, I'm here. They don't even know who you are, and you claiming you a citizen of that, that, that state, if a Nigerian goes to Germany and get off the plane and say, yeah, I'm German now. Germany's like, what? Don't work like that. That's what Moorish Americans done. They're like, yeah, we ain't in the United States no more. We back in Morocco, and Morocco's like, uh, we don't recognize you, because you haven't recognized yourself. You haven't petitioned the state. You ain't filled out no paperwork. Never. Listen. Listen. Any subject of Morocco has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco shall after having remained for a length of time equal to that which have, shall have been rarely necessary for him to obtain such an opposition, choose between the entire submission to the laws. The laws, how do you become a part of the laws? The state gotta issue you identification card to say you have agreed to these laws. You can't even get a driver's license without signing for something. You can't get a job without filling out a job application. Did you think you can just jump in someone's state and just say, I'm here? That's called arbitrary and capricious. It's patently frivolous. How do you become, how do you choose entire submission to laws? The state gotta recognize you, and you gotta recognize the state. With a pen. Right? So let's go back. International Court of Justice. All right? Okay, so what's happening in this paragraph? Listen. It's important. The purposes and objects of this convention were stated in its preamble. In the following words, the necessity of establishing on fixed and uniform basis, the exercise of the right of protection in Morocco and of settling certain questions. The question, the question connected therewith. So the ICJ said, uh, United States, you do see this word called fixed, right? You do see this word called fixed. So it's fixed already. Article fifteen is fixed. So what was the United States asking the court to do? To remove the fixed and let the United States say these Moors are just Americans now. And they don't have a right to exercise the right of article fifteen, paragraph one, to return back to Morocco. They want the Moors to be Americans forever. You see? But the ICJ was looking out, said, now we read the treaties and what? The strict sense, it said, this is a fixed human right of the Moors. These Moors supposed to be governing in the first place. You see? And the United States was trying to stop the Moors from being Moors. Okay. Right? So they want to unfix it. They want the courts to do it. Right? So picking it up right here, it says, the court cannot, the court cannot, the court cannot adopt a construction by implication of the provisions of the Madrid Convention which would go beyond the scope of its declared purposes and objects. Declared purpose of what? To fix a right for Moors to return. Continuing, further, this is the court talking. This contention would involve radical changes and additions to the provisions of the convention. So they told the United States, yeah, I'm sorry. These Moors don't wake up. It just is what it is. They have a human right. It's a fixed right. The uniform basis. The Moors have a right to return back to Morocco and pledge their allegiance. But where's Morocco? Well, Morocco's what? An empire. It's vast. And the United States is in what? Morocco. Meaning the Moors, they gotta go nowhere. It's like this. That's it. With a pen. And they know it's just that easy for Moors to do that. They're trying to stop it. It didn't work. You see? What's my point? Until the Moors actually pledge their allegiance to a state, they're still Americans, which means the United States of America still have jurisdiction over Americans regardless of their primetime. It's about paperwork. Can you prove that you're Moroccan? Because you sure as heck can't prove you're Moors American. Just because you got a nationality card from army-based applications or the temple or kinkos is not proven. And this is why the Moors be getting their butts kicked in court because someone lied to them. And got them feeling like this white man done something wrong to them. The reality is it was the Moroccan who sold you those bill of goods. And that's why those Moroccans who call themselves Moors Americans don't answer their phone no more when you reach back out to them when them packages don't work. Listen. It's about jurisdiction. I'm teaching you about extraterritorial jurisdiction because once you come back and repatriate to the state, if the United States tried to reach their long arm into your Moroccan state, that's called extraterritorial jurisdiction to try to grab a Moroccan who's pled their allegiance to the state. That would be a crime. Now you can have what? You can bring a suit against them for internationally wrongful act because now it's an international act. It's not domestic anymore. It's your state and their state. You see? Gotta understand what's happening. What's the?
The fifth contention of the United States is that the consular jurisdiction in Morocco was recognized and confirmed by various provisions of the Act of Al-Jusseris. And that the United States acquired an autonomous right to the, to exercise such jurisdictions independently of the operation of the most favored nation clause.
So you just gotta understand. The United States of America likes to use treaty provisions when it's useful. Then they try and say, but we don't need treaty provisions. So they enforce treaty rights. Then when they don't have the treaty rights, then they turn around and try to use their own legislative power to say they should still have certain rights. Right? So you have to understand, the United States of America tried anything they can in order to enforce their will, right? It's called their legal argument. Their legal defense. And, and you can't be mad at them for trying, but it didn't work. Right? That's what matters. In the end, the ICJ rejected it, that premise, that notion. Right? So, so now we have to talk about, okay, what is this most favorite nation clause, okay? We, we gotta go to treaty of peace and friendship. Okay? This is treaty of peace and friendship eighteen thirty-six. Article twenty-four, we're gonna pick up the last sentence right here, no?
Article twenty-four. And if it is further declared that whatever indulgence in trade or otherwise shall be granted to any of the Christian powers, the citizens of the United States shall be equally entitled to them.
Read again.
And it is further declared that whatever indulgence in trade or otherwise shall be granted to any of the Christian powers, the citizens of the United States shall be equally entitled to them.
So what's it saying? Okay, right here, last sentence of article twenty-four, the treaty of peace and friendship eighteen thirty-six. And it's further declared that whatever indulgence in trade or otherwise, right, shall be granted to any of the Christian powers. Right? The citizens of the United States shall be equally entitled to them. So what's this about? Whatever Germany does to Moors, the United States of America gets to do to Moors. Whatever the United States of America does to Moors, Germany gets to do to Moors, you see? So the United States of America said, well, just because Germany and them took their name off the treaty and don't wanna naturalize the Moors anymore, try to say put them under capitulation regime. The United States of America said, well, what Germany doing don't have nothing to do with us. Now all of a sudden, they get brand new. At first, they was holding on to the Moors because of treaties. Now they saying, oh, we don't need the treaties to hold on to Moors. You, you see how they contradict themselves? Right? So Moors have to understand, the reason why the Moors got naturalized is because the Sultan signed treaties with the other European nations that allowed them to naturalize the Moors. So then, the United States of America eighteen fifty-six, eighteen fifty-seven, they decided to try to make the Moors citizens as well. Next thing you know, north and south fight starts, the civil war. Right? And after that, what happened? They naturalized the Moors anyway. Thirteenth Amendment, fourteen, fifteen, Naturalization Act in eighteen seventy. You see? That's what happened. Now you fast forward to nineteen fifty, nineteen fifty-two, now all of a sudden what? France, the United States of America, arguing in court over who has jurisdiction over these Moors. The United States is like, we do. The other European states like, well, we gave up that right. Therefore, the United States of America cannot invoke that privilege anymore. It became a privilege and not a right. And the ICJ is telling all the United States Ameri- United States of America, you don't have a right, but you just might have a privilege. So they kept talking about it, right? Okay, just a moment. All right? No?
In nineteen oh six, the twelve powers of Al-Jusseris all exercised capitulatory rights and privileges to the extent that they were prescribed either by the General Treaty with Great Britain of eighteen fifty-six or by the Spanish Treaty of eighteen sixty-one. They did so by virtue of direct treaty grant, as in case of Great Britain or Spain, or by virtue of most, most favored nation clause, as in the case of the United States or without treaty rights, but with the consent of acquiescence of Morocco as in the case of certain other states. Accordingly, the Act of Al-Jusseris presupposed the existence of the regime of capitulations, including the rights of consular jurisdiction, and many of its provisions assigned particular functions to the then existing consular tribunals. Reference has been made in the course of the argument to articles nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-nine, forty-five, fifty-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-seven, ninety-one, one oh one, one oh two, and one nineteen. For example, charter five, which deals, or chapter five, which deals with the customs of the empire and the repression of fraud and smuggling, contains article one oh two, which provides, every confiscation fine or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by consular jurisdiction and on Moors subjects by Sharifian jurisdiction.
Paul, so the United States is now saying they have jurisdiction over Moors because our own Moors treaties said that the Moors, right, Moors who? What type of Moors? Moors subjects, you see that? Moors subjects. Moors subjects. Right, are under the jurisdiction of the empire. But since the Moors wasn't enforcing their own treaty rights to get back into the Moors and the Moors government anymore, the United States by default was still overseeing who? Moors subjects was your officer of what? Protege, you see? So because of that, the United States said, well, someone's gotta maintain jurisdiction over these Moors. So the United States wants to maintain it. And guess what? They were right. So what happened is ICJ turns around and gives them unlimited jurisdiction. Why? Because the treaty say, somebody's gotta be overseeing the powers of a treaty. Until the treaty is terminated, someone's gotta maintain it. All right, listen.
In the conditions which existed at the time, this article made it necessary for the prosecution of nationals of the twelve powers for fraud and smuggling to be dealt with in the consular courts. Since nineteen thirty-seven, the position has been one in which eleven of the powers have abandoned their capitulatory privileges and their consular juris- jurisdiction has ceased to exist. Accordingly, Morocco has been able to make laws and to provide for the tri- for the trial and punishment of offenders who are nationals of these eleven countries. The position of the United States is different and must now be examined.
So the ICJ saying, the United States is a little bit different here. All right, continue.
Unlike the Madrid Convention, the Act of Al-Jusseris was general in its scope and was not confined to a limited problem such as that of protection. On the other hand, the interpretation and the provisions of the Act must take into account its purposes which are set forth in the preamble in the following words. Quote, inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, peace and prosperity in Morocco, and recognizing that the attainment thereof can only be affected by means of the introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle of the sovereignty and independence of His Majesty the Sultan, the integrity of his domains, and economic liberty without any inequalities.
So, so why is the United States really invoking the triple principle of the preamble of the Act of Al-Jusseris? It's because the Moors failed to enforce it themselves. See, the treaty is expressive. Right? It's substantive language. It's an obligation for the Moors to get back into sovereign authority. But did the Moors do it? No. Did France wake up the Moors like they were supposed to? No. You see? So the ICJ is looking at this saying, well, according to the treaty, the Act of Al-Jusseris, the preamble says, inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, peace and prosperity in Morocco, and recognizing that the attainment thereof can only be affected by means of the introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle of the sovereignty and independence of His Majesty the Sultan, the integrity of his domains, and the economic liberty without any inequalities. So therefore, it was not being enforced. France was doing it and not the Moors. You gotta understand, the Moors were left in charge to run the empire. And this is what the United States was saying, okay? So these Moors ain't running it? So how can we enforce this treaty if the Moors ain't running this show? See how the United States is using this to their advantage? Listen.
Neither the articles to which reference has been made above nor any other provisions of the Act of Al-Jusseris purport to establish consular jurisdiction or to confirm the rights or privileges of the regime of capitulations which were then in existence. The question therefore is whether the establishment or confirmation of such jurisdiction or privileges can be paced, can be based upon the implied intentions of the parties to the act as indicated by its provisions.
Paul, so that means that the act says yes. Uh, someone's got jurisdiction over who? Moors subjects. The question is who was supposed to have jurisdiction over Moors subjects? Was supposed to be the Moors government as well as who? The colonial power. Because the Moors subjects belonged to who? They would just naturalize Moors. The United States of America saying, well, these Moors are still naturalized. They ain't claiming to be Moroccans. And they certainly ain't claiming to be the Moroccan government. So until they declare their independence and they return and, and choose entire submission to the law of the empire, they're still Americans. Therefore, they're still what? Moors subjects. So we should still have jurisdiction over Moors subjects. Because now they're Americans in our jurisdiction. This is how the United States talking, you see? Continue.
Any interpretation by implication from the provisions of the Act establishing or confirming consular jurisdiction would involve a transformation of the then existing treaty rights of most of the twelve powers into new and autonomous rights based upon the Act. It would charge, it would change treaty rights of the powers, some of them terminable as short notice. Example, those to the United States which were unlimited period by the powers and incapable of being terminated or modified by Morocco. Neither the preparatory work nor the preamble gives the least indication of any such intention. The court finds itself unable to imply. So fundamentally, a change in the character of the then existing treaty rights as would be involved in the acceptance of this contention.
So from the top, the United States is still trying to get full powers over the Moors. And the ICJ said, nah, the treaty don't say you get full powers. They just said that there's still Moors subjects, you have jurisdiction over them. But that's limited. Why is it limited? Because the Moors always have a right to return to Morocco. That's number one. Number two, it's supposed to have been the Moors government ultimately overseeing the sovereignty of the empire Morocco. So it should have been Moors governments overseeing both the Europeans and Moors subjects. Right? But, but the Moors, when the absence of their treaty rights, they were all Moors subjects. None of them were Moroccan authorities of the state. The United States of America is running the gamut all by themselves at this point, you see? All the Moors are simply Americans. So from the top, it says, the interpretation by implication from the provisions of the Act establishing or confirming consular jurisdiction would involve a transformation of the then existing treaty rights of most of the twelve powers into a new and autonomous right based upon the Act. So the United States wanted them to change the language, say, the United States of America gets to just govern over these Moors forever, perpetually. And the treaties don't say that, right? So continue, it says, it would change the treaty rights of the powers, some of them terminable at short notice. For example, those of the United States which were terminable by twelve months notice. Right? So in the treaty of peace and friendship, article twenty-five, it says, even the Moors could petition to terminate the treaties. But if you try to pretend like Moors don't exist, that mean Moors never have a right to even terminate the treaties, you see? The United States is fighting, they got all they chips in the center. They like, man, if we can get rid of these Moors, that mean we can control the whole gamut of the empire. These Moors are always gonna be Americans. They can never terminate the treaties, which means if they can't terminate the treaties, that mean they can't send us packing back to Great Britain. You see? ICJ is like, nah, the treaties don't give you that type of power. But we get what you're saying. They're still calling themselves Americans. They're consenting and acquiescing to be an American. They call themselves black people. And they call themselves Moors American, everything but Moroccan. So now the ICJ looking to saying, these, United So now the ICJ is looking at saying, these, the United States got a point here, they, they should still be able to hold on to some type of civil and criminal jurisdiction until these Moors do what? Choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire, right? Okay.
There is, however, another aspect of this problem arising out of the particular articles to which reference has been made above. These are the articles which include provisions necessarily involving the exercise of consular jurisdiction. In this case, there is a clear indication of the intention of the parties to the effect that certain matters are to be dealt with by the consular tribunals. And to this extent, it is possible to interpret the provisions of the Act as establishing or confirming the exercise of consular jurisdiction for these limited purposes. The maintenance of consular jurisdiction in so far as it may be necessary to give effect to these specific provisions can therefore be justified as based upon the necessary intentment of the provisions of the Act.
So, so therefore, the ICJ said, we're gonna give the United States a limited jurisdiction, right? A limited consular jurisdiction over the Moors. You see? What does that mean? Any Moors who wake up, right, or need to be adjudicated through consular court, the United States America was overseeing the jurisdiction of consular court. Right? But guess what, at the time, Moors wasn't calling themselves Moroccans, and they wasn't calling themselves Moors of Morocco, you see? So even though the United States America was given a limited jurisdiction, the United States America technically didn't need the consular court, why? Cause the Moors wasn't calling themselves Moors or Moroccans. Consular court was for Moroccans. That's why they was able to then close it down, cause Moors wasn't claiming to be Moroccans. Consular court was, was a dispute between Moroccans and Americans, but Moors wasn't calling themselves Moroccans. They were saying, we're the true Americans. Wrong party, man. Okay? Continue.
This result is confirmed by the provisions of Articles ten and sixteen of the Convention between Great Britain and France of July twenty-ninth of nineteen thirty-seven. These articles refer to the jurisdictional privileges accorded on the basis of existing treaties or enjoyed by the United States of America under treaties at present in force. They presuppose therefore that the jurisdictional privileges of the United States, even after the surrender of British capitulatory rights, would not be limited to the jurisdiction provided by Articles twenty and twenty-one of the treaty with Morocco of eighteen thirty-six.
Paul, so you gotta see right here, the United States not only, um, they're saying, not only do they not have to only, uh, use consular court, they can use their civil and criminal regular municipal courts. So Moors, since they call themselves Americans, Americans are adjudicated where? In American courts. Consular court is not an American court. Consular court is supposed to act like a neutral court that settles dispute between Moroccans and Americans. But since Moors ain't calling themselves Moroccans, they call themselves Americans. Worst part is, they call themselves the true Americans. That means America, the government, the federal government, could pull Moors directly into their civil criminal courts. Therefore, consular court wasn't even needed. You see? All because the Moors consenting acquiescing to being Americans instead of Moroccans. Okay. Let, let's fast forward. Let's start right here. This is where we need to get to nitty gritty, right here.
Okay. The court is now called upon to examine the particular articles of the Act of Algeciras which are involved. It considers it sufficient to state as its opinion that the consular jurisdiction of the United States continues to exist to the extent that may be necessary to render effective those provisions of the Act of Algeciras which depend on the existence of consular jurisdiction.
Paul, so this is where we're gonna leave it. And I'm gonna end by saying this, the court is not called upon to examine the particular articles of the Act of Algeciras which are involved. However, it says, "It considers it sufficient to state as its opinion that the consular jurisdiction of the United States continues to exist to the extent that may be necessary to render effective those provisions of the Act of Algeciras which depend on the existence of consular jurisdiction." What does that mean? So the United States America can hold on to a civil and criminal jurisdiction over Moors until they return to Morocco and pledge their allegiance back to Moroccan state. So therefore, in the meantime, they can maintain their extraterritorial jurisdiction over Moors, cause they're reaching in and grabbing Moors, cause Moors are still Americans. But soon as Moors stop calling themselves Americans, and they pledge their allegiance back to the Moroccan state, and now they're Moroccans, and they come under protections of a Moroccan state, the United States America cannot perform extraterritorial jurisdiction anymore, it'd be considered a crime. And that's what we gotta take away from today's class. The whole time, Negro, Black, and colored spiritual leaders have always known about these cases. They know about these treaties. But they refuse to put Black people in a position where they know their nationality, their nationality is Moroccan. If you know your nationality, now you know you need, you need to do what? Involve Moroccan treaties. Moroccan treaties would now put you under protection of Moroccan law, the United States won't have no jurisdiction over you anymore. Therefore, now you can start to enforce what? Justice. But the Negro spiritual leaders keep talking about justice, but they ain't seeking justice. That must be understood, we'll pick this back up in the next class, alright? I end with that. Islam.